On a call to order, the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for October the 28th, 2024. We ask that everyone please stand. Our, we're going to ask Commissioner Marvin Whitworth to do our pledge and our prayer.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the many wonderful blessings you give us each day. Father, we're thankful for life itself, that you woke us this morning to have the strength to be here. Father, we pray that you give us good judgment as we deliberate matters of importance for our county. We pray that you will help us to serve the residents of our county in the best way possible. Father, we pray for those who are protecting us, those who are away from their homes in harm's way. We pray for those who are sick, those who are facing life struggles. We pray that you comfort them and help us to be a blessing to them each day. Father, be with us as we deliberate this morning, forgive our sins. In Christ's name, amen.
Now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner. It's good to see each and every one of you here this morning. We want to say welcome to a new member to the Planning Commission, Michael Shirley, sitting back here. Glad to have you on board here. We'll try not, on your first day, to ask you for a speech or anything, but we're glad to have you with us, Michael, and glad to have you as part of this group right here. This time, we'll have a roll call and termination of quorum. Madam Secretary?
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Right.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. We're asking now for the approval of our minutes for October 14th, 2024. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those minutes are in good order. I have reviewed those, and therefore I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, our minutes have been approved. Any public comments, sir?
Uh, no, sir. No public comments today.
No public comments for today? Any items which are on or deferred?
Uh, no, sir. The revised agenda you have before you is correct.
Okay. We'll move right into our new business, beginning with, uh, and waiver request, item A, number one. Karen Jones, request for a fire hydrant waiver for property located along Walnut Grove Road, State Route 269. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good morning, everybody. Uh, the applicant would like to divide two acres of the subject property to give to her granddaughter and husband. Now, since this tract would be less than five acres, there would be a fire hydrant required to be within 1,000 feet of the proposed lot. There are two fire hydrants that are close to the property, but neither are within 1,000 feet. Information from CUD indicates that a hydrant can be supported in this area. You'll notice in your agenda packets that I also included the letter from CUD, uh, just saying that a hydrant could be supported there. Uh, we did discuss options with the applicant, with Ms. Jones, and kind of presented what it would look like, which direction she would go. We advised that if she were tracking off at least five acres, she would not have to seek a waiver. However, she wished to proceed with the request, and her reasoning is explained in her letter. Again, I did include that with your agenda packets as well. Uh, Ms. Jones is also here, and she can be, uh, she will be available to answer any questions or to give, uh, further explanation to the reasons for her request. Uh, we did advise the applicant, historically, the Planning Commission has required the installation of a hydrant if it could be supported. Typically, the only times I can remember where we granted a waiver when it was going to be a supported situation was when the, uh, water lines in that area were about to be expanded anyway. And so, rather than make that applicant bear the cost, you know, the hydrants are going to be there regardless within a few months, so we, we just kind of let the process play out that way. So, again, uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Jones is here, and she's available for questions as well.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Have questions for Ms. Jones? Like for her to come forward?
Doug, any recommendation from staff?
Well, as I said, historically, we would, we would require a hydrant to be installed in this situation. However, I think it'd be worth to hear what the applicant has to say in addition to what her letter says, just for the commission to be able to make a decision on that.
One second, Mr. Chairman. Doug, Mike, how far away are the two hydrants that are close?
It looks like you've got one at either, well, I say corner there. You have one at the Stones River Lane intersection, and it looks like there's one also at Walnut Grove. This property's kind of in the middle. You kind of see on the, uh, concept map there on your packets. Also, Ms. Jones had presented a, uh, another concept that kind of shows the general location of that. It, it kind of splits the difference between the two, so it's, uh, exact distance, like if you, yeah, Mike's going to do a quick little measurement here just to get an idea. About 1,200, 1,300 feet roughly, you know, not the, the property lines that are drawn there aren't exact, but that, that ballpark.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Uh, how many on this new fire hydrant, if it was to, to go, how many homes would that fire hydrant protect?
Well, as of right now, it probably just, if, if she had to put it in, it would protect that one that she, uh, would be splitting off for the house for the, be built right there.
Okay, so we'd be requiring a fire hydrant to protect one house?
Correct. Yeah. Now, again, if it were five acres, that wouldn't have to happen because it's not a subdivision at that point. That's what the issue is. It's because it's less than five acres.
Mr. Chair, on that packet that was included with this, looks like we got a letter stating this 1,300 feet east intersection Midland Road. I'm, I'm thinking that's where a fire hydrant might be. Is that why that letter was written from CUD?
Right. So that, and that's about what Mike had measured on the map, too, was right about in that neighborhood.
I'm going to ask that, uh, Ms. Jones come forward this time and, uh, give us some more information or answer any questions you may have. So if she would, please come forward. Come right up here. Get to have the spotlight. Just, just give us your name and address and, uh, and, and speak to the commissioners.
My name is Karen Jones, and I live at 3488 Armstrong Valley Road. And, uh, but we do on the farm where this is going to be built, and we farm it. It's about four, a little over 400 acres there that, we have no plans on doing anything but farming it as well as up the road on Armstrong Valley. Um, like I said, we, we've been farming it for many years and, and, but I have several older children in the family now that are requesting some of the land to, because they've gotten married. They're older and gotten married, and they want to, everybody wants to stay on the family farm. So this spot we picked out, which was, um, wooded area and not farmland. So, um, anyway, it just happened, we learned that we had to have a fire hydrant installed there. So we own in back of it, in front of it, all around it, and, you know, I was just, and I, I told everybody we'd give any access if they call on fire. If the fire department needed to go on either end of the road there, they can run through the soybeans, the corn, the wheat, whatever we had there to, to put the fire out at their house. But, like I said, I, I can gift them five acres, and then we wouldn't have to do this, but I'm trying to help them out because it was $16,000 to install the fire hydrant. And so, we were just trying to avoid another $16,000 to put that size fire hydrant because the water line was big. So anyway, that's, that's my case. Whatever. But I, you know, would just be grateful if we didn't have to. Like I said, there's one on both ends of the road and, and in my son's yard on Midland Road, and then down on Stone River, which we own that going back to where we border Wayne Westmoreland on that side. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Ms. Jones, you mentioned that you have other children that want to live on the farm there. Will they be building in this same area? Is this home or other places?
No, we, uh, well, like I said, they're, they're not all old enough yet, but, um, most everybody lives on the farm and already, the homes that are already there. Um, and if they are, we, they will be in, in an area that we're not going to, that we don't farm. So it'll be in a wooded area, but somewhere in the neighborhood, you know, of us. But not, it's, not especially right there where they are.
So specifically, I'm, I'm thinking is how close would another home be for a family member to this home?
Well, like I said, as of right now, nobody's asked for any more land. I don't plant. It's the only wooded area on that side of our farm. And like I said, we're trying to give, gift them, um, just the areas that we cannot really farm. So that, right there is all I know of as of right now that anybody would be. If it, if it came to that, you know, like I said, I could give them five acres and we wouldn't even, I wouldn't even need to be here. But I'm just trying to continue, you know, farm it and gift, like I said, we've got several. So I just trying to keep everybody down to about two acres.
Other questions for the applicant?
Ms. Jones, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Thank you.
How many grandchildren are we talking about wanting to, could, could want two acres? How many grandchildren y'all have?
Northern.
Told you that's going to put you on the spot.
Uh, there's to, I mean, at one point in time, there would be, it's the, uh, I'm going to have to count, three, nine, nine.
So you could be given 45 acres if you have to go to five acres, be given 45 acres of land to grandchildren?
I don't, you know, I don't want to cut back on some and give them some more. That's, that's the only reason. Like I said, we would love to continue to farm it. We have no plans on selling it because it's been in the family. Not my, but I, I inherited after my husband passed away, of course. But, so anyway, my, my son runs it down and he lives on the, he lives in one house that's already built. My daughter lives on, on Whiters Road on another farm, and then grandchildren live on the home place, and my husband's older son lives right next to us. So, like I said, we're all in the big family. And their children now want to build, but they're already living in already established houses there, but they want to eventually build, you know, home.
Ms. Jones, uh, yes, have y'all identified a perk site, a soil site for septic system? Okay.
Took care of all that prior to all this being.
For a home site, okay.
I got a question. It might be, um, something you can't remember, kind of like them grandchildren. Been out in the county like this. That water line got put in down through there some way or another.
It did.
Y'all granted easement to this organization at no charge?
Well, they actually compensated for their easement, you know. It came down in front, first in front of our house on our Armstrong Valley, and then it went, it has gone down Walnut Grove Road, which on our, right there, at this location, and then went up toward Midland on remaining acres.
I think that's something we got to remember because now that property forever is indebted to the family for being able to get in there and put in future taps for whoever owns that lot.
We've had multiple offers, you know, over the years, but like I said, my son running it now, and he's got a, a master's degree, but he chose to
Thanks.
come back to the home place and farm and, and like I said, daughter and her children live there, and we're all just one big happy family. Hopefully, stay that way. But I'm in charge of everything now since my husband passed away, so makes it harder to make the decisions. But, again, uh, you know, we're all together on this. And there are grandchildren, like I said, that live in the home place and then live in another, uh, spot on, and, uh, and then another grandchild doesn't live there, but he lives up the road a little ways. But it's all still, you know, I'm sure one of these days that, and the, the rest of them are not old enough yet. There's, I've got them from 22 down to, uh, uh, nine months. So.
Other questions for Ms. Jones? If not, we'll, we'll go on. You go back and reseat it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
I'll be glad to jump in here, Mr. Chairman. Been out in the utility business for 25 years, and I understand the need to have water protection. Every time they come through, I ask for a fire hydrant if I can get one. Makes sense. The issue as far as a planner, though, for me, is had she been willing to give five acres, we don't even ask for a fire hydrant. So the fire protection would be just the same whether it's a five acre lot or a two acre lot if she doesn't get a fire hydrant. The other piece for me is I'm going to roll back a little bit of experience in 1978 when I had a building package stolen. Kind of ironic when you think of it in terms of $15,000, but if I could take this $15,000 over 30 years at 5%, I've got $37,500 plus my original $15,000. As far as hydrant really over 30 years term for a young couple is going to cost them over $52,000. I can tell you where I'm going to go. I would like to listen to everybody else's input, though. I may not ought to weigh in on this because it's not family, but it's, I will, I'll preface my comment by saying this is a person, the deceased husband I grew up with and have known every day of my life. I know everyone involved here. My thinking, and I'm sort of the same way with Jim, if I thought in the farthest remote comments of my mind that they would sell this within the next five years, and obviously, we don't know what's going to happen. Something may happen, it'd have to be sold. But at this particular moment, as we sit here right now and make this decision, there is absolutely no intent of having any other home built on this property. And to me, it's sort of like shooting a rat with an Uzi if you're trying to make a, a big fire hydrant right there just for one house.
Do we have a motion out here anywhere?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, uh, waiver request for the fire hydrant.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just, thinking ahead like we always try to think for the future. The only thing that bothers me with this, if there's nine other grandchildren and they get two acres apiece, then it's 18 acres doing the math, but it could be up to 20 to 30 people involved. And if we waive this one, then we're going to be a precedent to waive the next one, and the next one, and the next one. And I'm kind of worried about that as far as the future. Even, I agree with everything you're saying on the family farm and everything else. I'm just thinking about the protections for the future if all the grandkids. Nobody's going to know if all the grandkids do or do not, but I do worry about the overall protection where maybe one hydrant could be put in, and it, who knows, it could be placed in such a way it serves all the kids that could build future there. I, I don't, there's a little bit of planning on their part and a little bit of planning on our part, so I'm struggling with that part of it.
And let me just say this, uh, even if, let's just say for the sake of argument that, and, and Ms. Jones had even said that they may not all be in the same area, but if you start going on either side of this property on Walnut Grove Road, you're getting closer to the hydrants. So even if they're another couple hundred feet closer to either intersection, there's not a need for a waiver because at that point, they're within 1,000 feet. Now, to the point of, you know, what's going to happen in five years, we really don't know, uh, you know, if, if things change and they decide to sell and have a development. I mean, then we get another crack at it as a development, and of course, that we would expect to see, that kind of thing. But just looking at it, if they just started going on either side, they're going to be getting closer to the hydrant, and they're going to be within 1,000 feet more than likely.
Could, and with that point, I kind of missed the first one. Could you point out again where the hydrants are located, just so I can orient with the property?
There we go. There's one right there at the corner. Yeah, Mike's kind of circling them. There's one right there at that intersection, and there's one right there at the intersection of Midland Road. So it's kind of equidistant between the two.
They're, they're wanting to carve off the two acres in this little wooded area right here.
Yes, and I know based on proximity, and I, and I agree with what, what they're doing. I, I just trying to understand and plan for the future because I know in my subdivision, there was not a fire hydrant, and four or five of us pitched in, which is really not an option here because it's still too far away from everybody else. So I, I do sympathize with that. So, okay, thank you for the information.
Other discussion? I just know if I could get nine grandchildren on the family farm, I'd put them there. I got five, and I'd put them there tomorrow on my farm.
Amen, brother.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into item B, submitted for final plat approval. Number one is Lewis Downs, Section 6, 24, 2079, 31 lots on 27.16 acres, zoned RM, located along Rhonda Drive. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved back in January of 2021. The lots identified on the preliminary plan, some of those were lost due to some step soil issues. They lost about 15 lots, but the proposed streets have been shortened, but generally reflect what the original design was going to be. So these lots are a minimum of 15,000 square feet in size. They are, they're not a PUD. This is typical RM type subdivision. Uh, most of our comments have been addressed. Actually, this plat's in pretty good order. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving to item two, Woodruff Cove, Section 3, a re-subdivision of Lot 116, 24, 2080, 22 lots on 4.9 acres, zoned PUD, located along near Top Lane of Shovelville Pike, US 231, Mankin Point, LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved back in January of 2019. This plat does appear to be consistent with the approved plan. Similar to the last final plat, most of our comments have been addressed. I believe there was a question about some fire hydrant spacing. We'll make sure that gets resolved prior to them trying to record the plat, but other than that, this plat is in good order, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Uh, there's an awful lot of, of plots in the dark area. That doesn't look good. What does that mean?
Well, uh, on that, that's part of the, the 100-year flood plain, and that's for, uh, I think those have already been
Elevated.
Elevated, yeah. So those have to be elevated, but those, this plat doesn't concern those lots. It concerns the ones that are, have the darker, yeah, those ones that Mike's circling right there. That's just the, the overall master plan of the development.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
I'll second it, too. I was going to make
And a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has approved with one, one no. Moving now into Section C, submitted for site plan approval. Item one, True Gospel Church reapproval, 193051, construction approximately 3,865 square feet, community assembly spate, religious use on 3.62 acres, zoned RM, located along East Jefferson Pike, True Gospel Ministry Baptist Church is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in 2015. Uh, there were some revisions to the plan that were approved at a later meeting in the same year, from April to September of 2015. Uh, however, construction never did start on that, and the plan was reapproved by the Planning Commission back in October of 2019. Uh, however, construction didn't start after that approval either, so the site plan is expired again. So they are asking once again for reapproval of this site plan. We did identify a number of tweaks to this plan. Uh, there are a couple of things from at least the planning and zoning side of things. Uh, they just need to, uh, update one of the neighboring property owner information. It's, it's a little dated based on what's on the county's, uh, assessment records. Also, the landscape plan needs a little tweaking. Nothing that we can't, uh, take care of from an administrative standpoint, but I believe Mike has a few comments that he wants to, uh, make known to the Planning Commission, so I'll turn it over to him.
So, um, earlier, TDOT would approve driveway connections at the end of our process. So we are now trying to get, uh, TDOT approvals on the front end, so make sure everything is copacetic with TDOT. Um, and so this is one thing that they will need to, um, update. They will need an actual TDOT plan, driveway plan, profile, uh, the pavement thicknesses or, uh, concrete if they, they choose that. Uh, so that's something that we'll need to work out with, with them. Now, TDOT, um, most likely will allow them access, but it'll have to meet all of their standards. So that, that was one thing that they still need to get updated. Um, let's see. Uh, like Doug said, there's some tweaking that we'll need to have done. Uh, the driveway culvert doesn't have adequate cover. The detention pond doesn't have the one foot of freeboard. Um, and he had mentioned the landscaping calculations. But other, TDOT and a few other, uh, minor things, um, we're, we're good with the plan. But like I said, TDOT needs to be in the process on the front end.
Would we be better off waiting on TDOT, Mike? I noticed out here on 99, the city's built a liquor, wine liquor place, and they're letting them in off of veterans. This is a city project, but they hadn't granted them off of 99. They've got everything cut in like they're going to get. So if we prove this, they still don't have anything. They could build a church and can't get to it.
Yes, sir. But it, uh, if you remember the subway that, that was rezoned as a planned in, uh, development, uh, TDOT came back and said, you don't get an access on 231, you have one on LS Drive. So, yes, it's, we're, we're trying to make sure that TDOT's happy on the front end. Um, you know, that's something that the church could answer if they're here.
Well, and I'll say that, that, you know, those couple examples, of course, were corner lots. This one's not. They have to have access.
They have to have access.
Right. So even if TDOT says, well, we, we want you to shift this around a little bit, I mean, that's something we can take care of administratively. We wouldn't have to bring that back to you all just to make sure that they meet all of TDOT's standards and everything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, my, my question's kind of very similar to that, thinking about traffic on Jefferson Pike. Would, would TDOT be the one that would, that would require a left-hand turn lane into this property or, um, or a right turn in?
Yes. So, so that's something that TDOT, uh, looks at, uh, when they do their evaluation, left and right turn warrant analysis. So, um, that's something that they may require, and, and it might be a big financial burden to the, the church if they, if they have to do that, so.
Does the plan that, that they've submitted to us give them enough, um, I guess, is there enough play at the front of that property border in Jefferson Pike that they could donate more right of way if needed?
Um, we, let's see. I don't know if they list the, the right of way width. Usually, I think they do have adequate width in there. I don't see it listed.
I see their, their right of way width is 50 feet now, but that
Oh, right of way, okay, yeah.
That wouldn't give them enough.
So that, it might be a little tight for a turn lane right there, so they might have to shift things towards their, their property to get, but then if you shift, the, the bigger the shift towards you, the longer the, the taper becomes. So
Correct.
that, that becomes a, a juggling act. So that's, that's kind of the reason why we, we want TDOT, we want their buy-in on the front end because they could come back and say, oh, by the way, you need a turn lane. You need, uh, something else special that, that they weren't, uh, aware of.
So that, that's where I think Mr. Thompson was saying, should we wait for TDOT? Because what we, what we what we might approve here could be way different after TDOT takes a look at it, correct?
Yes. No, I mean, I'll just, I understand where, I mean, it's up to the commission how they want to go forward with this. I mean, the overall design, I mean, yes, there may be some changes to the access of the property, but the overall design of the development itself, I don't think would change much, but it's up to the commissioner's.
Yeah. And you can see the dates on the lower right-hand corner. The original issue was in 2015, so this project's been hanging around a while.
Doug, can you kind of refresh my memory on a building this size for a community assembly? There's, I think, restrictions as to the number of folks that can be in that building at that particular, at any particular point in time. Do you know what that might be for this building?
They're showing, now, this is what is termed, looking at the assembly seats, of course, it's based off occupancy, you know, whether it's a small, medium, or large community assembly. This would fall under, based on what they're showing there, for assembly seats is small. Now, of course, we work closely with our building codes, folks, and also our fire marshal, as far as determining occupancy and those kind of things. So what they're showing us, it would qualify as a small, medium, or a small community assembly, excuse me. So, and forgive me, I was trying to talk with Mike as you were talking, Mr. Phillips. What was the rest of your question, if you don't mind?
Just wondering what the seating capacity would be and what would happen if they exceeded that seating capacity. Are they, is this plan kind of considering future growth? I'm just wondering if the applicant is here, could he answer some of the, could they answer some of those questions?
I'm not sure if the applicant's got any, if they got anybody here or not. Doesn't appear so. You can see that where the building is located, it's fairly close to their soul site, so I don't think this is going to be a, is meant to be just a larger type congregation. Maybe in time, they have some room for expansion. They have, you know, three and a half acres or so, but they're kind of limited there, because if they start expanding too far in the back, they're going to start hitting all their septic soils and everything. Obviously, we don't want that. So, plus, if they were to expand beyond 150 in their occupancy, they would have to get a special exception for a medium community assembly, as opposed to a small, which is allowed by right. A medium would kick them up to the next level. And I'll let Tanya and/or Josh, if they want to discuss anything more about occupancy, that's really more their specialty than mine.
I think the point, the point is, we've been proceeding aggressively over the last few years about traffic and traffic flow and traffic studies, and looking toward the future, of course, and the turn lanes, I think, would be an important part of approving something like this. But I would not feel comfortable approving it without prior approval from the state. So could any affirmation, could any approval be dictated toward considering what the state may come up with?
Well, you could, you have a couple options here. You could either defer action until they have a little more information on that front, or you could make approval subject to staff comments, one of them being they're working out things with TDOT and making sure that everything's copacetic with them. So you've got a couple options here.
This has come before us at least a couple of times.
Yeah, this is the, this is the third time. Yes, sir.
And I'm just wondering what's different about it this time than the other two times and what the future may hold. The further we get into the development of the county, the more and more we're concerned about traffic and traffic flow and safety issues and those kinds of things. This appears to be a real small congregation, a small church, and I don't want to overburden them, but I also want to look, I think we ought to look toward future development and what traffic on Jefferson Pike, what congestion that may call. This is the, this is the part of Jefferson Pike that has not been expanded, is that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
You know what the future holds as far as the expansion of Jefferson Pike?
Well, the county's long-range plan shows West Jefferson Pike being five-laned in the future now, for considering how long it's taken them to do the portion that they're doing right now, from Smyrna out to 840. I'll probably be retired and long gone before they get to this point, but who knows?
It was on the tenure plan back in 1990, when I was first elected, and here it is 30 years later, and we're just now working on it. So you could probably consider something like that happening in the future. But that's exactly what we're talking about, is future development and future expansion. And if and when that road is expanded, is there enough right-of-way that we're getting there and to not interfere with that building and making sure that there's enough room for that road expansion?
Right. As it's drawn right now, I think they've got plenty of room, as far from a setback standpoint. They've got enough room in the front there to handle that. You can kind of see where the front setback is, but, but yeah, and the parking can be in the setback. So, you know, at the most, you'd be looking at maybe 25 feet, so they'd be, they'd be fine as far as that goes.
I'll ask this, I don't know countless number of times, but I know staff has looked at this a couple of times, and here we are back the third time. Any additional information that you guys have come up with? Any recommendation that staff has? What would be the recommendation?
I mean, from my standpoint, like I said, I think from at least a planning and zoning standpoint, they've handled most of our concerns, except with a few tweaks that need to be done to the landscape plan. Now, the TDOT, you know, transportation issue as far as access to the property, I mean, that can have an impact on how this is designed. So again, I go back to what I said, you have a couple of options here. You can either defer it and wait for them to get a little bit more information, or you can just approve it subject to staff comments. Mike, I don't know if you've got a strong opinion.
Yeah, like I said, previously, TDOT was the last thing that was addressed, but now, knowing that TDOT's hypersensitive about access, I would feel better if we held off on this until we had TDOT's approval. We haven't even had a TDOT meeting on this yet, so.
I don't want to cut off any type of discussion at all, but we've waited at least nine years during this process, and I don't think it would hurt to wait a little bit longer, and that would be my motion to defer, depending upon further information received from the state.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of order, can we defer until the applicant does this legally, or are we legally required to only do a 30-day deferral and then it is automatically approved? How do the rules work on this?
Site plans don't have that automatic approval thing like plats do by state law. The state law really is kind of silent when it comes to the approval of site plans in and of themselves. Now, we do have some language in our zoning ordinance that talks about have to be approved within 90 days. We have a planning commission meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. We'll talk about that here in just a few minutes. But it's possible that they might be able to get some of this stuff worked out prior to that meeting. If that's the case, we can have it on that one. But I'd be more comfortable just saying, why don't we make sure that this is addressed before moving forward? But there's not an automatic approval issue with site plans.
So this would be back to us, this would be put back on an agenda for either defer it, deny it, or whatever, if they don't have their approval in a certain period of time, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah. I mean, we could put it on the agenda. Let's say we just put it on the November 12th agenda. Now, that being said, our recommendation from staff to the applicant would probably be, if you don't have this information, you need to hold off until you have it, because the commission's just going to defer it. Again, there's no sense in bringing it up, having discussion just to defer it. You know, we all know that's what's going to happen. So our recommendation to them would be get this taken care of. That might give them, you know, a little sense of urgency as well, that, hey, we want to get this approved. We need to make sure this is taken care of. I mean, we can certainly assist in facilitating a meeting with TDOT and the engineer and whoever else sits in on those meetings, but and those are typically virtual meetings, so we're more than willing to do that. We can alert the applicant and the applicant's design engineer to that effect.
And TDOT is very...
I just don't want to see it fall through the cracks and then somehow get automatically approved.
Yeah, that option doesn't exist for site plans, just plats.
TDOT is very good about setting up meetings rather quickly. So the design engineer's responsibility to reach out to TDOT and coordinate with county staff about setting up a meeting. And Doug's correct, they do have a virtual meeting, so we pull up the plans, look at it, look at the road network, and discuss all aspects of the project.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I make a comment? If it's possible, we would love to see a, myself and fire marshal here would love to see a floor plan of the building itself. Initial calculations would indicate that this building could probably, the occupant load in this building would probably be closer to 300 or 400 versus the 120 that they've, I believe they said 120, 105. So I believe once we see a floor plan and do a calculation of the occupant load, it would be significantly more than that. So it might be worth taking a look at that first, too.
Mr. Chairman, could I add that to my motion? To see the building plan when it comes back to us, to see actually the...
The capacity of it, the potential capacity of the building is probably significantly more than 105.
And also, TDOT will need that information, too, so it needs to go ahead of that.
So you're just adding that to your motion, that that would be looked at at the same time?
If that's permissible.
That would be part of the TDOT study as to follow that. I have the feeling that that would be a part of staff's anyway, to make sure we have all of that correct.
I mean, you could just defer subject to the discussion we've had today, and yeah, we'll make sure that we get that information for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I think it resolves.
All right. We have the motion. We have the addition that has been made to it, and we're going to call for a voice vote.
Jim Aberwater?
Confirming that that is a motion to defer, I, yes, on that.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yeah, I'm kind of like, want to make sure I understand. We're just looking at the floor footprint and not a set of floor plans, right? We're not looking at floor plans. They don't have to bring in a floor plan for you to figure the occupancy, right?
Well, the only way we can do an accurate occupant load calculation would be to see a proposed floor plan. It doesn't need to be exact, but certainly something, a general proposed plan. They've obviously got something in mind, or it wouldn't be laid out the way it is.
Vote yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Eddy Shree?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has been approved. Staff will be following that up further.
Yes, sir.
Moving into item two, Hunter Brothers Contractors Building, 2330...
I'm sorry, I don't think you have the most updated agenda, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. That was the...
Okay, we're just, item two that you had originally had has not there, and we're now, has been moved to Gum Road Convenience Store. I had pulled mine weekend. I didn't have this.
Sorry, we updated it Friday before we sent it out.
You've changed it on me.
Sorry.
All right. Item two, Gum Road Convenience Store, 243013, construction of 4,050 feet of general retail space. Gas station, convenience market on 2.33 acres, zone CG, located at the intersection of Manchester Pike and East Gum Road. Sash Kumar D Patel is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing to construct a gas station, convenience market on this property. They are showing access off of Manchester Pike, which is a state road, as well as East Gum Road. From a planning and zoning standpoint, most of our comments have been addressed. They do have to make some tweaks still to the landscaping plan after looking at that. Thank you. But I think most of the comments that remain are from the engineering side of things, so I'll turn it over to Mike to have him discuss.
Thank you, Douglas. This project has had a TDOT meeting, but I think we are still waiting on the left and right turn warrant analysis. I don't believe we have received that yet. That was one of the requirements that TDOT made for the driveway on Manchester Pike, Highway 41. Let's see. They are also needing to add several construction details, the detention pond spillway, the berm, emergency spillway, junction boxes, all those others, the dumpster enclosure, the grading and drainage plans still need some work. This area, and I'll go to the grading and drainage sheet. This central area kind of drains towards an existing driveway culvert, excuse me, cross drain across Gum Road, but their grading plan shows an elevated berm for their stormwater pond that's going to block water behind it. They do show a little bypass swell around here, but that bypass swell is less than our standard, half a percent. And also, that they need to coordinate with CUD, if it is allowed, that there's adequate cover over this existing water line right here, and it might remove too much cover over that water line. So we need to make sure that they're good with that. So all in all, I think this project still needs to cook a little bit more, and I don't think it's quite ready.
What is currently in that spot?
In what spot? I'm sorry. It's just a farm field.
It's undeveloped. There's nothing there. It's just open.
I think they've got horses on it right now.
I have a question, but with the TDOT, I know there's a lot of discussion going on at that intersection about realignment and stuff. Is that in their discussions as well?
It would be something that's discussed. Another project across the street, is that the one you're talking about? They were talking about realigning West Gum, have it come up and make it more of a T-intersection farther to the north here. But that's...
There was nothing on the east side about realigning that side of things. It was really just West Gum to Manchester Pike.
Correct. But my question was just with knowing that it's not going to be a four-way intersection at Gum, potentially.
You're saying, is TDOT aware of that, is what you're asking for?
Was that in that discussion?
Yes, it, yes. Yes. And the project would add a left turn lane on Manchester Pike for the new realignment, and I believe they were going to do left turn lanes from, coming up from the southeast.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And Manchester Highway in that area is 55 still, 55 miles an hour. So those turn lanes, I'm curious to find that information, because a turn lane for this development could impact tying into the tapers you mentioned on the other development.
Yes.
So we need to make sure all that's coordinated.
Yes.
And then also, if being proximity to East Gum Road, blocking that, whether it stays a three-leg intersection, four-leg, or stays a four-leg, or becomes a three-leg, whatever it becomes, all that needs to be coordinated out through there, so.
There's still, like I said, a lot, a little more cooking needs to happen.
So with all that in mind, I'll make a motion to defer this one as well, until that can be sorted out.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Motion to defer. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, we will be deferring that one on item two. Staff reports and other business?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just briefly, our next planning commission meeting, as you can see at the bottom of the page, the agenda page there, is going to be on November 12th, which is a Tuesday. The Veterans Day holiday this year falls on Monday, so the county offices will be closed that day. So we moved the meeting to the 12th. Now, typically, since the planning commission only has one meeting in November and December due to the holidays, that's a night meeting. This past deadline, we did not receive any rezoning applications. So there really is no reason to have it as a night meeting for any public hearings. So I polled the commission last week and pretty much got an overwhelming sentiment that, yes, we'd be okay with moving this to a 9:00 AM meeting. So I just wanted to remind you all that the November 12th meeting, which again is a Tuesday, will be at 9:00 AM, as opposed to 6:00 PM. at nine AM as opposed to six PM, so we'll be able to give you one of your evenings back. So, that's pretty much all I have. I will say, actually, I will say one other thing. We did have our open house for Plan Rutherford last week on Thursday over at the Agri Park Community Center. Thought things went very well. I know several of you were able to go, so we appreciate seeing you there, but we were very happy with the turnout. There's still a lot of work to be done as far as going through the approval process and adoption process. We'll be starting that after the first of the year. You know, there are certain statutory requirements we have to advertise for at least thirty days prior to having a public hearing for that, so just stay tuned on that. I would encourage you to go to the Plan Rutherford website, and we'll send that link out for everyone so you're, so you have it to start reviewing the materials that are there, because there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of discussion about that, so we're excited to get moving on that. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further unless Mike had anything.
Doug, just for some clarification, that November 12th meeting at nine AM is our only meeting for November?
Yes, that's correct.
Then our only meeting for December will be on Monday, the ninth at six PM?
I believe that's correct. Yes, sir. And that's, as far as I, we're probably going to get at least one rezoning application, so I would bank on that one being a night meeting, but we'll know in a couple of weeks when we have our deadline on that.
Any other business? If not, we adjourn.